Yeah, I figured it out.
All right, councillors. Hopefully my device is going to do what it's supposed to do. All right, it's five o'clock and it's the twenty fourth day of June. We have a regular town council meeting. And we see the media coming, so thank you so much for being there. And thank you for our gallery, David Redd, thank you. We have an agenda with a little bit of a modification. If you look on the five E, it's a redundant item. It is covered on the five A, so just, just eliminate that item. So we need someone to approve the agenda, but before we do that, I'm going to do the land acknowledgement. The town of Caston acknowledges that we are located on traditional Blackfoot Confederacy territory. Thank you. So councillor Kenley?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve the council meeting agenda, twenty fourth day of June, twenty twenty five, with the amendment.
Thank you. All in favour? Thank you very much. All right. So as you can see, there is a, a strong agenda there. We have delegations, three of them. And we will have a break at five thirty five, we were informed. So we're going to go to four, the adoptions of minutes of the June tenth meeting. Councillor Granger?
I would move approval of the previous council minutes for the tenth of June, twenty twenty five.
Thank you. Any comments or questions? No? Okay, all in favour? Thank you very much. Let's go on to five. So five A, Joshua, I think you are going to try to hopefully have the last little bit of work on this policy.
This, this should be it, Mayor.
You worked hard on it.
Yeah, well, it's, hopefully it's going to serve you better going into the future, so. What this discussion tonight is about is just the eligibility criteria, it's just kind of narrowing down on those things. So what's included in your package is that spreadsheet. On the left column is all of the criteria that's in the current policy. The middle column has the recommendations or proposals for replacement. And any replacement or new criteria is really just to broaden or narrow as needed, it's nothing really new. So at this point, we would look to retain what's indicated as retained and then add in whatever the proposals are. So, for example, the current criteria with regard to provincial or federal funding is needed a little bit of clarity. So narrowed in the sense that schools are now identified as the joint use planning agreement is the funding mechanism for them, not donations. And then it also indicates that it's primarily funded. So people who are getting grants would still be eligible here.
I really appreciate the way you presented the changes and how you have really created a very analytic format for us. I think you've done a very substantial, great job.
Good, thank you, Mayor.
So personally, I feel very comfortable with what Joshua is presenting here. I think it really reflects what we have been speaking of, but maybe do we need to tweak something?
I agree, I think it's really good. Just one question with the schools. If, if our, let's assume that we pass this, which I think we should. The agreement with the schools, is that going to lag behind? I'm just wondering, we don't want to have a gap where, you know, the school comes to us assuming because the last twenty years they've had use of our facility under this process that they're taken by surprise. Like if, if the agreement with the schools is lagging behind, we may want to just give them an email or something and say, just so you know.
I think it's a very good point that you're making.
I met with McGrath and Raymond in the school division two Thursdays ago. I think we're really, really close to getting that one to the end as well, so. I think next meeting in July, we can probably look at what would be a really close to final draft of the Jupa along with the this drafted more formally. So they should be, should be quite close, but we had a really good meeting a couple of Thursdays ago with Westwyn, I think we're, we're almost there, so I plan to bring that to you in July.
Thank you. So Jeff, what exactly would you like for, for us to help Joshua? Well, yeah, now that you're back there, Joshua, give me a sense, what would you like a council to help you with at this point?
Well, if the eligibility criteria are acceptable, then we would just take this and then put it in a formal draft of a, a new policy, which would also include your feedback from the two other discussions. And then you can just look at everything together and hopefully it would go pretty smoothly.
Okay, all right, so what you will do then, next time around, you will bring us a policy and a format of a policy. Okay, so you don't need any more from us at this point. But we appreciate, I think, do we have a consensus here? Are we okay with that? All right, so here you go, you have your to-go. Finish your job, thank you so much. All right, the next one. Bylaw seventeen oh three C, council procedure bylaw amendment. We have passed two readings. We had a recorded vote. And I would imagine that councillor Granger, you would want a recorded vote on this one too? All right. Okay, so this procedure is to really help future council to try to figure out what an eligibility for being a councillor would be. It's not perfect by all means. But it addresses some concerns that some citizens have in town. It's not punitive. It's not intended to be punitive. It's intended to reflect concerns in the community. And maybe even around this council table. Councillor?
I would like to make a motion for third and final reading on bylaw seventeen oh three C, council procedure bylaw amendment.
Okay. Councillor?
If I could make a comment, just because I think this is going to pass. I just wanted to be clear that I'm, I'm voting in favour of this, but not because I have any problem with councillor Granger's performance or attendance.
Yes, and I think same comment here. Are we ready? All in favour? Thank you. Against? Thank you. All right. Policy F twenty seventeen, Jeff, you may want to talk about this one?
Yeah, we're seeking a, quite a simple amendment to the fees and charges policy, this is a request, we've had some requests in the parks department for use of the spray park outside of its normal hours of operating, so someone wants an early morning birthday party or they want an event and it's just time to come on at a certain time and off at a certain time. And so to reserve it and to use it in off hours, we've put a rate within the policy, forty dollars an hour. If it's on a stat holiday and it's also outside of the normal hours, it's eighty dollars an hour. Just because we'd have to send someone out to turn it on and turn it off and do all that. So we're requesting approval of, I believe we're at dash seventeen on that dang thing or something like that. So we're asking for approval of that amendment, the dash seventeen amendment.
Only non-seventeen amendment. Councillor Coates?
My only concern is if a group rents it, who's going to police it? Other people see that thing come on, they're all going to come starting to go to us.
Yes.
Well, I don't know how you get around that particular issue.
Yeah, good point councillor, I mean, and some of the others, sometimes we just have to hang a sign, private event in this time, this time, it isn't perfect by any means.
It's a pool, we got a fence, we keep up, not we?
Right, 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 yeah.
But with the tennis courts, with the pickleball, with the soccer field, football field, we just have people that just say, sorry, this is a private function.
I hope that works.
I mean, we won't know until we try, I guess, right?
We should always have staff, I can't imagine someone renting this for a three AM event. So we should always have staff, I would think, when this happens. I, I, I don't know why you'd want to be there at six in the morning or five in the morning.
It'd like to be later in the evening.
Yeah, yeah, right, probably nine in the evening or ten in the evening, yeah.
It's a good concern councillor and it's worth monitoring. Councillor Kenley? Okay, all right councillor Kenley, since you are on a park and rec, you want to?
Yep, I'll make a motion to approve the proposed amendment to the fees and charges policy.
Thank you. I think it's a great idea, actually. All in favour? Thank you. All right, so the next one is a Sunday recreation use policy. As you could see, over the months and of, and years of this council, the policy has changed really. And I think there is one need, one more need to put it really on the lap of administration to deal with. With the requirement that we had said that no one should be constrained and forced to work on Sunday. And so those are the, in the background, you could see that administration is intending to look at all those parameters. Go ahead, Josh.
I'm just here to answer any questions.
Go ahead.
So Josh, you're just recommending that we rescind the former policy, correct?
That's all.
So let's say that the constitution of everybody who's in the room changes dramatically. With no policy at all, how would we ensure that administration wasn't asking staff, requiring staff to work on Sunday? Like I don't, I don't have any concerns if this, but let's say there's a big upheaval and it'd still be a concern to me.
Yeah, I, I don't believe the employment law would be on our side if we did that. These current employees joined the town under the assumption that they wouldn't have to do that. And for us to change that midstream and force that, I don't think we'd be allowed to.
Yeah, that's a good point.
Yeah.
Have, have we put anything with respect to that in that agreement, Jeff?
There is clause with respect to Sunday.
Is there?
Yeah, I mean, we do, if I might, we do have some staff, water waste water staff, seasonal staff. And they, they have those specific things that are quite defined, so we would have some negotiations before bargaining otherwise.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, it's a good point. All right, so we need to rescind the policy, councillor Kenley?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to rescind policy S seventy dash one, the Sunday rec facility use.
Thank you. All in favour? Thank you. Yeah, I think it's ninety percent with administration already, so. Jeff, you really want to speak to the next reitem?
You're saying, are you asking if I do or are you telling me I really do?
Well, I'm trying to tell you.
Happy for either one there. Main Street trees, so this is a topic that's come up certainly at other councils and come up before. Councillor Kenley brought this to my attention, that we currently have a couple of our pedestrian crossing flashers that are now that the trees are out and they've grown a little bit and leaves are, you don't see them coming up of Main Street. And, and so as we were having this discussion, it took me back to conversations that have been around the council table before on this topic, and as you see, I took a little walk down the two blocks of downtown just to say, you know, we have a number of businesses who you can't see what they are at all based on the location of those trees and and maybe we should have a more holistic look at this issue now. Administration's done, aside from me going downtown and taking some pictures with my phone, that's the extent of our due diligence to this point in time. And I just put it on here to say if council wants us to look at this further, then a, a resolution to direct us to do some due diligence, I think we should talk to the businesses, maybe the chamber, that kind of thing. But I wasn't going to commence any of that till we'd had some discussion here.
And the main street renewal, also those people involved with that?
Well, we do have that Main Street project for, yep, so that could be a part of that too.
Okay, councillor Brown, councillor.
So, not that I didn't trust your pictures, they were fabulous by the way, but I did walk about myself today. And we definitely have, like, I had to duck in a couple places, like, we've got offside branches and stuff coming out. My thought is, is I am not in favour of removing the trees. Absolutely not. I think it brings beautifulness to our Main Street. But we already are talking about bringing in an arborist. And I'm just thinking maybe that's something that needs to be budgeted for every year, is that we have a tree trimmer come in and trim him up so that whatever that needs to look like, less poofy, I don't know. Because they are pretty overgrown, I would say, and they're beautiful. But, you know, they need a little bit more love to sleek them up a little bit, so I would love to make a motion for administration to look into this, if council's ready.
Okay, hold on councillor Burch and, and Jeff and then?
So I, I agree with councillor Brown's remarks, I drove down and interestingly, except for one business, at different places I could see the sign.
That's the right angle, right?
Yeah, like every one of them could be blocked if you stood in the wrong place, but as I drove past, there was only one that really was obliterated, the rest I could see before and after kind of thing. And I agree, for the ten weeks we have leaves in town, I'd trade to see them go. So those are my thoughts.
Okay, councillor Jensen?
So I'm not in favour of removing them and, and this is why. The trees are there because of a beautification program that we had years ago, I believe. We have spent thousands of dollars in removing sidewalk, putting rubber around the trees, trying to get the roots from going up over this, raising up the sidewalk and whatnot. And also knowing that we plan on revitalizing Main Street, I don't think that it is I don't think that we should be spending taxpayer dollars on something that's it, it doesn't seem worth it to me to spend the money on, to remove the trees when we already know we're going to revitalize Main Street. And as far as, I did walk down Main Street also. I didn't find what councillor Brown found with the trees being but you have to remind, she's like six foot two and I'm like five foot three, so, so it didn't bother me at all. I drove too and I, and most of the businesses that, you know, like, you, you know, everyone know, the only one that I questioned was something Pro-Hardler was C, COP or something like that and their sign needs to say what they are, you know, I, I don't know, I didn't know what they were, but it, the tree did block it.
Councillor Granger, and then I would like to hear councillor Kenley.
Yeah, I think a judicious, smart tree trimming exercise will fix the problem. This is normal in every town that's got, you know, beautifica, trees for beautification, it's a normal thing to do. When we get around to doing Main Street revitalization, looking at the design, I think most of those trees will probably go and be replaced with new ones that are irrigated. And some of the projects that I've been involved in in the past, you can, you can pick a breed of tree, a species of tree, like a, like a small conifers.
Yeah.
As an example, or the other version that I've seen is, is a deciduous tree that doesn't really leaf out until it becomes a canopy and it's above all that stuff. So those are two options, looking at the revitalization design. But we're stuck with what we got and I think that we can solve the problem by a smart tree trimming exercise.
But I don't think we have addressed the concern of councillor Kenley, which is the lights.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, I'm fine if all this, as long as we take all those three trees completely gone.
Yeah, and sometimes you have to do that at intersections to get site distance.
That's all totally normal.
I think, I think we need to kind of mitigate.
I want to hear from the businesses as well, I just think that we need to be prepared that the majority of them are going to tell you to take them out. In my opinion.
Yeah.
So be prepared for that.
All right.
So a couple of points of clarity. I have one council that wants three trees removed and consult the businesses, I have a couple of councillors that want, three councillors that have said they don't want trees removed. I need some kind of resolution that you, at least four of you agree on, and then we'll definitely act on that.
Okay, councillor Granger, you had your hand up?
I would say my recommended solution would be what I said, a judicious tree trimming exercise with an arborist, so that you don't scalp the tree to the point where it's going to die. And I, I've seen this done many, many times.
You, you're making a motion right now, so you, you're giving us a motion right now, so I need a motion. So your motion is to?
Well, councillor Brown was gonna talk too. I'll make a motion if that's what you want.
No, I thought that's what you were doing.
No, I was giving you my comment.
Oh, I'm so sorry.
But I would like to make a motion.
Please, go ahead.
Go for it, girl.
At six foot two. Yeah, so I would like to make a motion to direct administration to consult with the businesses on Main Street and with the police in regards to the safety of our crosswalks and to return a report to council on what the direction, best direction for having a safe Main Street and being able to see the signs moving forward, what that looks like and to, and to consultant arborists. I think that's part of it.
You need to. Okay, all right, we have a motion there, anybody else wants to speak to it?
Is that like, are we like? The trees need to come out by the signs, like, it's not like consulting anyone, like, they need to come out. So if that, like, are we just wasting time, like, on those three at least, that's all I'm asking.
So could we not just have two motions then? Because we're speaking of two different things here.
Yep.
So my motion is this, you could then follow it up with a motion that says let's remove the ones that are causing safety issues.
Yep.
Okay, all right, we have one motion on the table, do you want to speak to it?
Just a, a quick comment, I, I think that the answer that's going to come back is what I said, you know, a, a proper tree trimming program, it's, it's, we're the council. It's, it's our town, it's our job to figure this stuff out. You can talk to the businesses, sure. But at the end of the day, if a business came to me and said, I want that tree gone and it isn't for a safety reason, I would say, no, sorry. The trees provided a beautification aesthetic purpose and this councillor wouldn't say, take the tree out. So I don't know what the consulting, the, the businesses are going to do, but I, I won't I'll, I'll vote in favour of councillor Brown's motion, but I think I know what the answer is going to be when it, before it gets here.
So I think it's our job as councillors to listen to the businesses on Main Street. And if they are, yes, the buck stops here and yes, we are the ones that are going to make the final decision. But I think it's our job to listen to the businesses on Main Street, to hear what their woes are in regards to the trees. And yes, the safety is huge, so that to me is separate. Let's, let's just talk about the arborist, meeting with the businesses, moving forward that, return to council and we'll make that decision. Is my understanding.
And your motion.
And my motion.
So are we comfortable with that? Okay, all in favour? Okay, all right, so.
I'll make another motion.
Go ahead.
Uh, I don't know if you want me to direct you or just say, to make a motion to remove?
That was fine.
To make the motion to remove the trees located.
The crosswalks.
There's only three of them, the crosswalk, the two main, Main Street crosswalks that are affecting the pedestrian signs.
Councillor Coates?
That's fine, I, I had never had any trouble seeing those flashing lights even with the trees, but if it's better for safety, I'm fine with it, it's just like you said, the tree trees.
Yep.
Uh, is everybody else okay with that idea? Okay, all in favour? All right, so.
Mayor, can I ask one more tree question while running the topic?
Go ahead.
So we had our list of traffic improvements, I'll call them. The third avenue going east was the bridge.
By the bridge is always a.
Because we can just take a chainsaw of those trees, we don't need an arborist, we need a chainsaw.
I was thinking Main Street Bridge, I'm with you now, yep.
I, I was almost in an accident, I was coming over the thing and one of my neighbours was pulling out and he said, I honestly couldn't see you till you were past the tree.
Yeah, yeah.
But I think that's just a chainsaw.
This is all those, they're on the north side, right, everything on the north side, there's a lot growing up?
No, these ones are on.
Is that provincial building property?
The East Bank, on the south side of the bridge.
Yeah.
It's just about three trees that have just kind of blown up and blocked the.
You're talking on the east side of the bridge there?
And that flashing light, for some reason, has now turned north, so you can't even see it as you come over the bridge. The wind blew it or whatever happened.
Yeah, I totally agree with you councillor Burch, dangerous. All right.
Because we've opened Pandora's box, I'm going to run through it just quickly. So another street is the one I told you about, to add to the list, was the campground.
Oh, yeah, do you want a quick update, Mayor, if I might on that? So I sent it to Lior and he said they're going to trim all those spruce trees up that are all down, so they're on the north side of the road and they're going east. So he says they'll trim all those up so they're higher and put a yield at the end of that series of trees.
Thank you, thank you.
Yeah.
All right, do you want to?
Yeah, I was gonna email you that, sorry councillor.
Do you want to do six B, Jeff?
Sure, uh, yeah, so Main Street design updates. As we've been corresponding with Associated on this Main Street thing, Daryl just said, well, here's the streetscape or at least the, the parking and the, the bulbs and if we can start getting, you know, just any feedback before we finalize it. So he sent that to you, it's a bit of a, I mean, it's not too bad to go through, it's just kind of block by block as it takes you through. So I was just, if there's any comments of something that we didn't anticipate or missed or they just want to tidy all this up. I actually did have one thing I'll be sending back, just so you know, in the earlier iterations of these drawings, the corners of the block on Main Street were more pronounced.
Yeah.
So where you walked out in the earlier iterations, they were more cloverleaf and they were far more pronounced than this is. And this was interesting to me because I haven't seen these squared off ones before. They were, they were rounded and they went out a little further, so they were more behind the angle parking, so that was just one thing I have on my list to send back.
Councillor Granger?
Yeah, I, I, I looked at the drawings pretty carefully and I agree with what you're saying. The advantage to, call them elephant ears or bulbs, is to provide sanctuary and a a location for pedestrians to cluster with sight distance for the traffic and the pedestrians and they kind of changed it a little bit, and the other thing about that is, is because they may have to modify them at our request to, to maybe to change them back to more what they look like before, is it, is the radius of those curb returns, because if we've got tractor trailers, traffic, that kind of becomes the design vehicle. And.
Yeah, that'll encourage them to use the bypass, great.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, no, but we have delivery
Yeah.
vehicles in town and the problem is, is that if those curves are simple curves, constant radius and not a parabolic shaped curb return because of the, the back wheels of a trailer track different than the front wheels and you end up, and found this in Banff, with, with the design vehicle was a seventy-two person highway bus, because that's what they have in downtown Banff. And so, yeah, exactly, and if we hadn't have modified the, the, those radii, radii on those corners, the buses would run over the feet of the pedestrians standing there. So that's, I noticed that they, they've changed. Because I made this comment a couple of years ago to make sure that they, 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 they go through a design exercise where they track the design vehicles and if it is a tractor. And if it is a, a tractor trailer, even some of the small, um, uh, delivery trailers, I wanna know that, that they've looked at this, and that they may have to modify the radii on the, some of those curb returns, so that a truck back wheel tires don't run over somebody's feet, or, or worse, hit somebody. So that, that's an important element in, in downtown reconstruction.
Thank you councillor for your input. Administration, you can.
Yep, so if anything else comes up, shoot me an email or call me, but I did, I went through and just noticed a couple of little things, um, they do show like further intersections have the more elephant ear things, but for some reason up in here, they're not, and I just wanted to make sure that was clear as to why.
Add check the radiuses.
Yeah, yep, I got that note too, you bet.
Alright, so the, there is councillor Kenley.
I was gonna say, this isn't like detailed, like, it's like fourth half, they're planning on putting lights and stuff, right, or no?
Yes.
This isn't like showing that, I'm just making sure.
It'd be a separate set of drawings.
Is that Freddie's?
If I, I can add just one, one thing I, I did note and I was happy to see it. Because I banged the drum from the day I got elected about fire flow on Main Street. The water main, if you notice, the size of the recommended water main is three hundred millimeters, that's twelve inch. Currently, it's skinny six inch, and so they've addressed that fire flow issue, and I'm glad to see that.
Thank you. Councillor Jensen, you wanted to speak to it?
No.
Okay, alright, so that's all good, Jeff?
Yep, thank you.
Okay, we have a few minutes, five minutes there.
Well, you've even got fifteen minutes if you need to, depending on how long you wanna take a break for.
Well, do you want to take a six C and try to work us through?
You can probably do six C and seven, um, Joshua, do you wanna speak to six C? That's a amendment to circular, okay, if you don't mind mayor, thank you.
Bill, thank you so much.
Okay, so this, uh, agreement, as it's said in your background there, is just due to circular materials hoping that they would be, uh, in a position to really take over, uh, with a third-party contractor within three months, and they just didn't get there, so their updated timeline is fifteen, an additional fifteen months. So, uh, we did a little more homework into what our uh, capacity was, as well as Cardston Support Services, what we need to operate according to their standards. Which really aren't too far off from what we're doing. Um, there, we do need to do something a little different, for example, cardboard we need to store indoors. Um, so we've made it part of the fee that we have the capability to do that. Um, but Support Services is ready to do it, and we're ready to do it, so we'd ask for your approval of the amendment here.
Thank you, can you just give me an idea, when you say they need to have, uh, a covered area for the cardboard, what what does that imply, are we building something?
We have priced it out, so we would, uh, purchase a storage container.
Okay, alright, thanks, makes sense. Okay, councillor Granger?
So I, I read this over and, um, it's a, a pretty tight agreement. Um, we are the contractor in the description, and there's a whole lot of things that we have to do, more than I, I thought. And this is the first time I've actually looked at the, got a, got to look at the nitty gritty. So, I, I've got a couple of questions, just to clarify in my mind what we do and what they do. Cause it's not perfectly clear, hopefully you'll be able to make that clear for me. So, um, obviously this is going to be some kind of a um, in, in order for it to work efficiently, it would have to be curbside collection of recyclables.
At this point, no.
So that's coming up, April next year is curbside, this is just to continue the depot as is. And I know it's written, it, 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 they really did not wanna budge on the wording. So the way that we worked with them is to say, give us in writing those things that don't apply to us, or how you are content with what we're doing, and they did provide all of that.
But yet we're such, you want us to sign an agreement that doesn't specifically say that.
Right.
Little uncomfortable with that, I defer to my lawyer friend across the room there.
I'm with you, I had the same discomfort.
Cause, um, it says specifically that the contractor, the town of Cardston was, it has to get the stuff to the, to the facility. And right now recyclables is self haul, we don't have a collection system, we have a place for them, for it.
So Support Services does arrange for the hauling, so it does reflect what.
Yeah, but the, 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 the document says from the residence. So how, how are the recycle, the PPP, the, you know, the, the stuff that they're gonna take away from the transfer station? How is that to get from my driveway to the transfer station under this?
Right.
It doesn't, they're not doing curbside.
Right now.
So then we have to.
Yes.
Not right now, no.
Right, right now councillor Granger's status quo, that agreement is a status quo. It's just, you will carry on bringing your recyclable to the depot.
One myself.
Councillor?
Yes.
If I might, uh, your concerns are absolutely valid and I share them. Um, the reason that we're still comfortable moving forward is this boilerplate agreement, which they made in Toronto.
Yeah.
They are trying to force on every community in Alberta. And it's just not reasonable to believe that they're gonna get in legal battles with every community. Um, you know, if they don't wanna budge on the wording, you know, and I, I just don't believe that they would. What's the incentive for them to get into those battles with people? They assure us up and down, we just want you to continue what we're doing, what you're doing. Now, if you say, no, I want an agreement in writing, says that, say so, and we bring it back to you, it's fine.
So, I, I hear what you're saying, and you kinda hold your nose and hope for the best.
That's right.
Um, in the future scenario, one of the reasons I'm asking this is that the Solid Waste Commission is going through this right now, you know, in terms of what does the future look like, and, and they're gonna strongly recommend to its, um, municipality members of, of the commission that in order to successfully divert waste, recyclables, and organics and food waste out of our dump, out of, out of our landfill, the big landfill. The only way to do it is with a, with a s- three-stream curbside collection of organics, food waste, recyclables, like these guys are talking about, the, the triple P, and regular garbage, and so, um, a- and really what I know about this and what I've been exposed to at the commission, as, as our, our municipalities, as the towns rep on the, on the commission, is that this won't work unless you go to a curbside pickup, so in the future, under this scenario, who's going to do that when we switch?
So what we've been told is, under the regulation, which is provincial law, that this body is responsible to meet the obligations of these corporations under that legislation. Now, they're doing this with us because it's the easy play. They don't have to s- spend a whole bunch of money creating infrastructure in every community, they can just piggyback what you're already doing. We're not doing curbside, so they do not have the opportunity to piggyback once that standard comes into.
Likely will be, could be.
What, us?
Yeah.
Well, not unless you authorize us to buy a bunch of bins, and we just don't have.
That comes with it, and I guess
But you wouldn't be forced to do that.
The commission is gonna be pushing on the municipalities.
Oh, sure, well, but the idea of the legislation is that the producers pay for that, the corporations pay for the bins, not municipality, yeah, yeah.
So.
Councillor Granger, councillor Burton had this hand up for a while, and he needs to have a chance.
So I, I think that's a good point, if, if ultimately it's government saying what does and doesn't happen. I think we have to assume that at some point, regardless of what our, you know, win, win agreement is with the contracting party, that it'll be foisted upon us, would be my guess, right? You know, if the government says, here's what we want everybody to be doing, at some point, somebody will have to bear that cost. Especially if we've agreed to it in an agreement, but.
Okay, hold on, hold on a second. So, what exactly? What's the feeling around the table, I know councillor Granger has much reservation, and I understand why. But councillor Burton, do you have the same reservations?
Well, yeah, I mean, I think it's a valid point.
So.
But, but is it going to be foisted upon us in any of it, like, what choice do we have?
Okay, so that's my, my, my question right now. Okay, so, should we approve the amendment or not? Councillor Granger obviously doesn't feel we should, we should not approve it, but the problem is, if we don't approve it, we're still not um, doing, moving forward with what the government wants us to do.
My question is, do we have anything in writing from them? Even if in the form of an email that says notwithstanding term blah, 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 for the next period of time, here's what we expect.
Yeah, we have all. And, uh.
So it, it, it refers to the what and the how long?
Yes, and another thing we s- we talked about when we were considering this is at the very least, if they were to say, look, we're gonna impose every jot and tittle of all of this stuff that we have in writing that didn't apply to you, I mean, I, I think we'd have a good case that they were acting in bad faith.
So wh- what I would recommend then, given all of that, is that we approve it, but when we send them our signed copy, we do a cover letter that says, we're providing you this signed copy under this understanding. I think they'd have a really hard time going back on.
Councillor Kenley?
I was gonna make a motion.
Go ahead.
No, I, I've got something else to add. So, I'm uncomfortable signing a contract that really isn't, I, I'm, I'm wondering if it's necessary, because the other thing about EPR is provincial program, is it is hopelessly behind schedule. And I don't, I don't know that we're gonna see rubber hit the road in this program for two more years or more. And so why should we bind the town in a contract that really isn't applicable, can't we just keep on doing what we're doing? And when the government of Alberta and EPR is ready, then we'll look at this, why do we have to do this now, because I'm not comfortable with this.
The, the answer to that is absolutely, you are under no obligation to do this.
Okay.
It is, it is circular materials and who they represent that is under the pressure, not, not towns.
Well, we're, this is premature then, in my view, because EPR isn't ready, it's not coming. We can carry on with Support Services, self haul to our, to our trailer, and to our transfer station. Like, it's like you, you got the gun to our head, these guys, and, and, I'm, I'm sorry, I, I'm, I'm a, I'm a contract guy. Right, and I don't think we should be signing inapplicable contracts that are contrary to what we might end up doing in the long run.
Okay, thank you for your view, uh, Jeff, and then councillor Kenley.
Appreciate everything you're saying councillor Granger, one of the challenges is circular isn't ready to roll out their obligation in our community, as you said, it's behind, and so they're coming to us and saying, can we pay you to keep doing what? Cause at least you're doing something, and then we will ensure there's an end market for this stuff, we'll make sure it gets somewhere, that's part of what they have to do. And we keep collecting it, and we keep sending it out as we have been, they're paying us for this. And give them a stopgap to get their ducks in, because they aren't ready.
Yeah.
And so they're saying, look, can you give us a few months here till April? My, Joshua and I are feeling is that we'll see a pickup managed by somebody at Lethbridge next April. They're managing, we're out now.
Okay.
Right now, this is, this is allowing them to still, but Joshua's right, we don't have to be involved, we have Support Services and Infrastructure in place, and so we have the ability to stay involved, because we, we're not starting from scratch here, we're not inheriting any of these colonies. But it is a stopgap, councillor.
Okay.
Okay, so it was my understanding that circular material, that this was under a trial basis, so whether we sign the agreement or not, isn't it just a trial thing, and so if we don't like it, we can pull out of it?
No.
And we know it, it was just a trial.
That was my question, is there an opt-out clause on that?
Well, it's after fifteen months, no?
Yeah.
Well, yes, and, and there are termination clauses in the agreement.
Okay, so Joshua, I just want to ask you, is your recommendation to council to approve this, this ame- uh, this amendment?
This is hard, because you, like, you're speaking rate from where I stand on it personally. But I, I just think the risk of this going sideways as far as the community is low. And, you know, it just keeps the ball rolling forward, because ultimately what this has done is tied up a ton of administrative time. And that does burden the community, and at least this way, we've designed the fee, so we are getting paid for our time from these people.
Okay, so councillor, can you keep it really short, we need to recess now, and I have some to eat and go into public.
Well, the new piece of information, and I'll keep it short, is that I didn't realize we're gonna get paid in the interim.
Yeah.
That's, that's positive, so I think I could support this, is that's a given. And I like councillor Burton's idea of, of sign it. But we're almost like writing a letter of memorandum, transmitting this signed contract that really isn't applicable yet.
Okay.
Right?
Yeah, that's correct.
Yeah, so I, I, I could probably go with it.
Thank you.
With those clarifications.
Thank you very much, and appreciate your input, because you have an understanding of contracts and I appreciate that. Councillor Kenley?
Yeah, I'm just gonna make a motion to adopt the amendment of the circular, circular materials contract.
Okay.
With, with the proviso, that we get paid, and
No, no.
That we write a.
My motion is all of this.
Yeah, alright, so, all in favor? We have directed administration to do that cover letter.
I'm opposed, because I, I, I wanna be sure that councillor Burton's.
Alright, opposed? You want, thank you, alright, fine. Alright.
Can I make a motion to break for fifteen minutes?
Thank you, all in favor?
Thanks.
Thank you, thank you very much. No, you, you have some very good point, but.
Yep, it's a motion to reconvene.
Thank you. All in favor? Thank you. So we need to and thank you to all those of you in the gallery, I see Gordon, I see David, and I see Ryan and I see Norman. Thank you. And our media.
Hey, thank you, mayor. So this is a public hearing for land use by law amendment sixteen forty seven Q. Uh, just of interest and I just want to confirm with Shem, this is your first public hearing under legislation required to also be accessible electronically. Um, but I don't believe we have anyone accessing electronically, okay, but it's certainly up and running and it's available. So this amendment, you have, uh, you've passed a first reading on this back in May. If I were to, without reading verbatim and just to summarize what this amendment is proposing, is it's addressing uh, development in, in the flood fringe or high hazard flood fringe. Um, the amendments are grouped largely under R three zoning, large lot residential zoning. There is some criteria for development um, in that zone. And then there's also a flood reduction overlay for specific lots within the town. So this does not apply to an entire zone, it does not apply to the entire town. It applies specifically for lots one to thirty two and block one, plan one sixty one, commonly known as creekside development. Uh, Mr. Atkins is here representing that development. Um, the other thing this touches on as an aside is you might remember it's allowing shipping containers as a discretionary use in recreation and open space. That's one of the other changes. And then there would be minor changes related to definitions and uh, to support all the things I just mentioned. Um, so we have made no amendments to this since first reading for interest. There has been a small proposed amendment from councillor Burton to one of the clauses, but we would bring that back before second reading. Um, so we won't worry about that this evening. Uh, it's just clarifying the application of all the clauses, nothing terribly material. Uh, I know we have Mr. Redd in the uh, audience that wants to speak to this. Uh, Mr. Atkins in the audience that wishes to speak to this. And we also have Ryan Dis, Dick from Old Man River Planning Commission, uh, that will speak to this. Um, as you see on your agenda, council, just for information, uh, Ryan has a number of things we've asked him to speak to. Uh, for the purposes of the public hearing, he'll just focus on this. When we come out of the public hearing, we'll have him back to speak to the other items, to not mix that up. Um, and I think I've touched on, I think I've touched on everything from my position here, mayor, so I'll put it back to you. Like I said, I know for sure you do have two asking to speak, plus Ryan, and then anyone from the gallery.
Okay, councillor Burton?
Mayor, I think it would be appropriate of our planners speak first.
Okay.
And set the stage and then we can hear from other members.
Ryan, would you be okay for that? Thank you, go ahead.
Hi, everyone. Thanks for the chance to speak and provide some context to this land use by law amendment. As Jeff said, the, the predominant initiative here is to bring into place new flood mapping. Now, for context, the flood mapping we have now is from the flood damage reduction program uh, from the mid nineties and at that time there's flood mapping for a few southern Alberta communities, including Fort McLeod, Pincher Creek and the town of Cartstone. Um, since then, a lot has changed and namely the legislature brought into place the flood damage uh, and reduction legislation. And they brought in that act and, and they introduced the idea of a regulation and that regulation still hasn't materialized. But nevertheless, the main thrust of that was to update flood mapping for communities that already have it and need an update and to bring about flood mapping for communities that have never had it. Um, so I'll quickly go through, if you, if you see fit, what we have here today. I'll, I'll just quickly touch on, on the various redlined text changes. Most of them are, are sort of administrative and, and just carry out the main thrust of what we're looking to do, which again is to bring in the new flood map. So we talk about insuitability of sites, addressing this, the, we have a new term that's came about uh, with the sort of, I'll call it the new flood mapping methodology, it's a high hazard flood fringe. Cause we, historically, there's, we have the flood risk area, which is composed of the floodway and the flood fringe. But now it, it's become, I guess you could say, commonplace to have a third category, high hazard flood fringe. So we've, we are recognizing that language in the land use by law now. Uh, before we get to the R three, three district, there's two, two places where we have little mentions of flood proofing measures and the high hazard flood fringe. Again, those are really just administrative. In the R three district, and again, Jeff mentioned this, we have the R three zoning and there's few areas throughout town that have the benefit of that zoning. Uh, and that includes the creekside subdivision, which are the lots within block one, plan one six one, zero, 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 eight. Um, now, back a few years ago when the subdivision was, uh, came into place, I guess almost ten years ago now, um, we introduced the special requirements for this subdivision. And that's in section fourteen of the R three district. And this was in recognition of the fact that there was, there's some susceptibility, some, call it likelihood of flooding there based on our existing flood mapping. So this amendment uh, comes about at the, sort of the same time concurrent with a few development permit applications having been applied for and dealt with by staff in the MPC. And through those discussions, certain things have come to light, you know, and concerns have been raised. So we've had the benefit of that process, which has helped inform some of the proposed text amendments here under the special requirements. For one, in order to precisely ascertain where a proposed building is to be located relative uh, to the flood mapping, uh, it's, it's not always appropriate just to use a standard site plan prepared by an applicant. So we're saying here that an Alberta land surveyor should be preparing and, and also staking out the location of a building. So that brings certainty to, to the development process because it can be a little bit unclear and challenging for the approving authority if you don't have the benefit of that. So that's the first one. We talk about the, the requirement for a real property report to be prepared afterward. Now, this is. Now, this is, uh, and Jeff alluded to this, but this might be something that we choose to do away with if we see fit, uh, to rely just on the original stakeout.
Or just change it to may, we may.
Right, right. Or get rid of the shall requirement. So that's number two in there. Um, number three, uh, brings in some language about the flood fringe or the high hazard flood fringe. And number five, this, and this before we get into the, the overlay district itself, ties in with the overlay district by saying that any time you have a lot where there's, that's, um, uh, that's inundated by either the high hazard flood fringe or the floodway, you lose the benefit of permitted uses. And, and things move over to discretionary, and that's of course in recognition of the flood risk. And the flood risk is bigger than just the potential damage to private property, right? It's in the public interest that a municipality takes a really close look whenever there's, you know, palpable flood risk. So that's, that's the idea behind that. As we go through the other changes, of course, there's another sort of housekeeping change in that recreation and open space district, adding, uh, shipping containers as a discretionary use. I believe we may be one. There's a desire to, to list that under discretionary uses development officer, as opposed to bringing them to the MPC. And this gets us to the, sort of the final matter, and the main thrust is the, the overlay district itself. So the overlay district came, came about, uh, I believe when we did this bylaw in twenty sixteen. Uh, so there's a new preamble and purpose statement, as you've probably seen there. I've went through this study, tried to understand it as, as best I can, and, and so has staff. Um, trying to wrap your head around the new methodology. There's a lot to it. And now, I, I know that both at the similar time, both the town of Pincher Creek and the town of Fort McLeod are thinking about how to implement their new flood mapping. And they haven't done that yet, but they're, they're sort of not far behind us. So I've had discussions with the other planners in our office that represent those towns about how they'll go about doing so. And, and the province has said, or the, the consultant has said, that there is some discretion on the behalf of the municipalities to how, how you go about implementing. Right? There's this new idea of a one and two hundred, one and five hundred, one and one thousand year mapping. I could see, you know, the whole town potentially inundated. So what do you do with this information? Well, it's a municipal prerogative, um, as to how you go about implementing. And we've had this discussion, and, and again, it comes back to, cause, cause when I, my recollection is, and I, we printed off a new map, tried to look at the old flood layer versus the new flood layer, a lot hasn't changed. There's some small changes, and then there's this idea of the new high hazard, right? This preamble, uh, hopefully gives the necessary context to, to folks new to the idea of flood mapping. And I think the rest that follows is, is administrative and just puts into effect the things I've already mentioned. Um, the requirement to potentially have a, a land surveyor stakeout a building, even if it's not in the R three district. Cause of course, the flood mapping, the channel goes through the whole town. There are some other districts, um, that are sus- susceptible to the flood mapping. That, that's really, uh, I think what I would like to say, maybe it's worth noting that we have had a, a conversation, had a meeting with staff and, uh, Creekside Developments about how to maybe as a follow-up amendment to this, go about implementing, um, some of the, 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 the planning approach that was brought about as part of the subdivision. Things like potentially reduced setbacks and, and, you know, looking closely at how we establish a regulatory environment for this subdivision, whereas right now, they just get treated the same as the R three district, let's say thirty foot setbacks. But the way that subdivision's been established, it's, it's really not practical. So we're planning a follow-up amendment and looking close at that subdivision um, at a time when it's, it's seeing some attention and some development, probably like I mentioned. So I think that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ryan. That helped us to have a good context for the next speakers, presenters. Thank you very much.
I have one question. Question, Ryan, um, other than along the course of the creek, are there other areas of town that, that would be affected by this?
I mean, the whole, the whole channel, um, yeah, th- there is, but, um, uh, I'd, I'd have to look at the map again to see really, um, that, cause I don't think there's anything really appreciable. It's ups, downstream of the Creekside.
Go ahead. By my, Mayor, to your question, when you look at the inundation maps, the hazard maps, I mean, obviously, when you get to events like one in a thousand year, most of the downtown has an inundation issue.
Yeah.
It spans a lot of two. Um, knock on wood, I'm not dealing with the one thousand year event. Um, so you could argue especially down by, um, No Frills, the concrete plant up through Main Street past Curstire and the Main Street there. Depending on how far you consider. You'd say yes, it impacts others. You would get to this intersection fairly handily after about one and two hundred year. But it is fairly contained enough.
Well, Ryan, would, we're doing some Main Street planning or design or whatever. Would, those engineers, would they, would they have access to these newer flood considerations? I assume so.
Yeah, that's public.
All right.
Thank you.
Any other question for Ryan? Thank you, Ryan.
Okay, thanks.
Okay. I'd like to know, who would like to go next? Is that Mr. Redd or is it Mr. Atkins? Okay, perfect. Gordon, if you don't mind coming. Okay. All right. Go ahead.
Thank you, council. And, uh, uh, my comments will be brief. Um, I'm not impressed with the fact that the provincial government is using the town of Cardston to change the rules of the game after the game's been played. Having said that, um, the new mapping is new information and important information. And, uh, in fact, it's, it's, uh, better than the previous, uh, material. And so I have no objections to, uh, the things that have been talked about here. Um, the reality is, is that we have a physical entity that is different than anything else in the town of Cardston. Topographically, in terms of the location, the creek, the golf course, and so on. So the vistas are, are increased, the, uh, hundred-year-old forest that is there is, uh, different than every other situation. The lot sizes are more than double anything that the town would normally be approving. And, uh, with all of those things, it's, uh, also interesting that, um, in the last thirty-three years, we haven't had a breach of any water on the property that is called Creekside. None, not a drop. Uh, and we had a twenty-ten, twenty-thirteen, and twenty-fifteen event that were very close to a hundred-year event. Again, there was no encroachment onto the, onto the subdivision. The subdivision is designed with overland drainage, uh, program. And, uh, so we've got a private road and a lot of other things that are unique, both to the town of Cardston, but also to subdivision. I've done about eight or ten subdivisions, mostly in calibring. Um, and all those are about a five hundred units that have been put in, in place. One of those along a, a floodway as well, and so do have some experience there. The, um, overland drainage was designed by Dennis Westhoff, who was one of the best hydraulic engineers in the province of Alberta before his passing. And, uh, in addition to all of that, um, and I consider a blessing, uh, that, uh, the land, the embankment, the riprap, the subsurface, and so on, that I inherited by purchasing the land, was all faulty. Um, in the meantime, between Gordon Atkins and the town of Cardston, we've spent about five million dollars meeting the criteria that, uh, that the province and the environment have put upon us. But we were, and that's why I said, in a way, it was a blessing that the trees that came and lodged themselves within the uh, golf course bridge changed the erosive action to the point that it uh, entirely eliminated all of the so- the concrete sidewalk riprap. And it took about thirty thousand cubic meters of my land and trees away. Uh, but in doing so, it forced both the town and myself to take another look at this, use the environmental, use the Department of Environment and their engineering background and so on, in creating a better, um, embankment situation. And so, uh, as I said, from that point of view, uh, I'm, I'm not in, in opposition to anything that I see here. There's, there's a few things that we're still discussing, uh, with, um, Old Man River with respect to setbacks and that sort of thing, but, uh, those will be, uh, for a different s- discussion. But from my perspective, uh, I'm okay with, with this amendment. And, and as I said, I'm, I'm just, uh, not impressed with, uh, anyone being able to change the rules of the game after the fact. And, uh, the province is one of those few people that can do that, and they have, so.
Thank you. Councillor Brown, do you have a question?
Um, actually, more of a statement. I just wanted to thank you for all of the love and money and time you've put into our community. I know it's a special place in your heart, and you've given a lot to the town of Cardston to make it better and more beautiful, so I thank you.
Oh, I was just, I'm sorry, go ahead. No, you go ahead. I was just, uh, speaking to Jeff's assistant and, and telling him, uh, that, uh, not only is it unique, and we've spent a lot of time in doing it, but as I said, topographically, locationally, and the golf course, the vistas, the hundred-year-old forest, all of those things uh, make it a very special place. If in fact, uh, my desire was that hopefully there would be a number of people from Cardston that would opt to, to make that choice. Uh, that's not, um, on the great wish, wish list of Cardstonians. Having said that, uh, I said to myself, if they don't come, I'll have a five million dollar park and a place for my own house. I was just gonna say, the concept that you mentioned of tweaking our, our development guidelines to meet your project, cause you and I have had discussions, and you know, it is a, a s- uh, the expression, the round peg in a square hole or whatever. For example, setback, you know, you pointed out to me that it's not a straight visual line, it's, it's curved and things. And so I, I certainly support that concept, Gordon, of giving, uh, preparing something that's different, but that works for both parties. And it gives you more certainty, and it makes it easier on the MPC, because, you know, it's not purely dis- everything discretionary, so. I, I certainly support that concept. Well, I, I thank you for that, and exactly as the case, as I said, when, when we talk about the uniqueness, if I said to you after doing eight subdivisions, that the one thing that stands out in my mind as being more important than any single thing I could bring to the table as an architect, a designer, a developer, uh, the one thing that made the biggest difference of all the subdivisions that we did was a private road. And the reason the private road made a difference, and particularly here in Cardston, we've got a road that is not a collector. Uh, and so you go down and you, you return, you don't, you don't drive through. The road is meandering, and we came to that conclusion together in order to have the kind of streetlights that we wanted in there and so on. But the reality is, is that the COVID really gave us the opportunity here to show how important a walking area where people feel secure and where they have visual stimuli that they don't get anywhere else. The fact is that the road is posted at thirty kilometers an hour. That's very low, um, both in the town of Cardston and in, in most cities. Uh, and particularly for those people who love to go past the, uh, the, um, trailer park at seventy to a hundred kilometers an hour. But in any case, uh, that and the fact that there's no curbs, gutters, and sidewalks, there's overland drainage, so there's ditches to take care of the water and snow. And at the same time, uh, when you can't park on the road, uh, it's been obvious to me that it, it works as the other subdivisions worked, and that is that what we've really got, the road is really a big pedestrian pathway. And I encourage the people that are walking there, walking their dogs, bikes, and all that sort of thing. And the reality is, is that the design of the meandering road and, and the trees encourage people not to become automobile oriented. And so I think that that's something that really works very well with respect to the subdivision. In any case, I appreciate your support, and I appreciate the previous council's support in doing what we've done. Um, and, and I just have the small wrinkle of, as I said, I don't like people changing the rules of the games, but, uh, the province, uh, swallowed some bitter pills in the
Yeah.
nineteen, twenty thirteen, and, and, uh, but it was interesting to me how many people chose, as I have always chosen, and that is that what it's all about is the quality of life. That's what it's all about for all of us, for our families, for our housing locations, for other towns that we choose, it's quality of life. And so that's what I'm all about, and I'll continue to fight that battle until I'm gone, so.
Thank you. Thank you very much for your presentation. Thank you. David? Thank you.
Yeah, I won't ask to sit down. I've done that in the past. Can you hear me, or do I need to use this?
Yeah, no, we can't hear.
No. No, I don't. I would vote to have this meeting at six o'clock in the morning, like was discussed earlier. One of the advantages of coming early is you find out what the town council's talking about, so I'm glad I had that opportunity. I'm better early in the morning. You may say, I'm a good faker, cause I may get through this. I wasn't sure if I was gonna get through it, so I wrote it down. So if I collapse, Jeff or the press will read what I have to say.
And then we'll take care of you.
I have a, a personal directive that may preclude. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for the opportunity to speak on bylaw sixteen forty-seven Q land use development amendment. When I opened and read the notice of public hearing sent to me on behalf of the town by Carson's Chief Administrative Officer Jeff Shaw, my first reaction was, why are you picking on me? All I've done is seen an appealing property in a well-developed and designed subdivision that it's the first time it's been seen in Cardston. And I reviewed development proposals, and I bought in. So I put my money where my mouth is. I am a landowner in the Creekside subdivision. On further reading of the notice, I was very quickly saw the reason for the notice, the flood damage reduction overlay district. Before I express an opinion, a concern, and put words to questions that come to mind for possible council consideration, I would like to acknowledge the work, time, and skill of all individuals and bodies who have taken the land use amendment to this point. From previous development experience, which has taken place in two countries, four provinces, and twelve states, I have some development experience. And I know extensive research, study, analysis, time, talent that chase to create a body of work that's been put forward. Well, thank you for those who have done that. After reviewing the proposed amendments and considering their impact from five stakeholder perspectives, meaning developer, which I've been, current landowner, which I am, future buyers, which I may be, and anticipated future developments and redevelopments that may or may not take place along the concourse at Lee Creek through the town of Cardston, I think for the most part, the amendments are okay. Meaning, no tsunamis, but maybe a few waves. I have a concern with regard to Schedule Three and Schedule FDR amendment wording, because it significantly places a majority of the lots in one through thirty-two in the Creekside development, which will be by default deemed to be discretionary uses requiring presentation to and approval by the MPC. This creates more work for both the town and prospective buyers. So the question is, there, is there any, is there any now, or could there be consideration? So the question is, is there any, is there any now, or could there be consideration given to grandfathering already in place sales, or could or could it be considered? Second question is, can the wording of the amendments, particularly in Schedule Two, clauses fourteen point three, three A, fourteen point five, and the schedule FDR in various places include wording that would preclude fewer lots being developed needing to be designated by default as discretionary uses? If so, it would save work, expense and time for both applicants and the town development apparatus. In closing, I'd like to say that development of areas close to water bodies is not an unknown quantity and has been successfully accomplished other places using forward-thinking, creative design, focused engineering and appropriately streamlined legislation. Just because something is different from a perceived local norm does not mean it should be denied. Careful and careful, careful and objective, not subjective thought is necessary. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your presentation, your concerns. Councilor Burton?
If I may, and I won't direct my comments necessarily to you, but just part of what this does is it gives more information to the MPC. So for example, like our planner mentioned, one of the lots, the the water course went right through the lot, and so it becomes very important to know where the house is going. Do you know what I mean? Like, you know, four feet makes a big difference of whether that flood plain is at the front door or beside the house. So I think part of what this does is it gives us more information than as we went through the process on the first couple, we realized we were getting, we had to have, we really had to have it. And I think information is always good. Hopefully you apply it wisely, but I think more information is always helpful when the consequences could be significant. Like Mr. Hacken says, you know, maybe the last thirty-three years, there hasn't been water there, but I think conceivably there could be. That's what the new mapping tells us, right? So anyway, that was just that comment.
Thank you. Any other comments? I think none. Thank you very much to all of those who presented. We need to then have a motion to adjourn. Yeah. I'm trying to figure out who else is there. Is there anybody else? No, nobody, no. Okay, we need a motion to adjourn the public hearing and to reconvene to a regular meeting.
I'll just make a motion to um
Adjourn.
Adjourn the public hearing for bylaw sixteen forty seven Q.
And reconvene.
Does that say motion or a difference? And reconvene to the
Council meeting.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you. All in favor? Thank you very much.
She had it written down.
All right. So you are all welcome to stay, but I know that Ryan is going to address a few more uh issues that we have.
So while we had Ryan here, I'd asked him to speak to a matter that came to you as a delegation about detached suites in R one zoning, just to give some clarity there. Uh also talking about planning for municipal reserve, the use of various structure plans. Uh we're getting ready to commence that area structure plan um that Council Burton's been speaking about. And also just speaking generally about some local improvement tax, which we're gonna be talking about in closed session a little bit later. I've asked Ryan to speak about that generally. Um he sent me a number of links of other communities' local improvement taxes. I haven't had a chance to get that to you, but I'll send it out as general information. Um I think between, there must have been five or six different ones there that we've seen in the region. And and maybe Ryan will speak to that a little bit too, so um I'll
And and then there's that, there's a video that Orska prepared that I just wanted to show you informationally and then he could comment on it.
Shim, you had that ready to go when time is there?
Want to see the video first, Councilor?
Uh whatever Ryan wants, really.
Okay, well, you're directors.
Oh, I I don't, I don't know if I know what video we're talking about.
Oh, the one that was shown at our AGM.
Oh.
I just wanted to show them what Orska can do and
Oh, okay, sure. Yeah, of course. Whatever order.
Okay, so do you want to do that first?
Sure.
Shim, do you have it ready? Oh, okay, well. Maybe.
Go.
Yeah, let him go then. Do you wanna let Ryan go?
Oh, okay. Yeah. You have it?
Let's do R one detached suites.
Okay.
Yeah, no problem. Um detached suites becoming more common. The twenty sixteen bylaw brought them into the R three district as a discretionary use with some standards. I don't think we've had one. Am I correct?
No, well, I've been here.
I don't think we've had one. Yeah, yeah. It it comes at the same time that other municipalities were looking at it. Um and some communities have always had this, you know, you call them mother-in-law suites or whatever you want, but it's a usually a subservient, you know. It's a smaller dwelling that sits behind typically the principal dwelling, often on top of a garage, sometimes beside a garage. It's a, it's a nice way of providing, call it gentle density, or the ability for for um homeowners to reinvest in their own property without acquiring uh off-site property. We've, I I work with the Crowsness Pass as well, and they introduced um detached suites two years ago maybe, and they've seen a flurry of activity. And and they're they're worth watching because they've had it. It's come hard and fast for them. They're, of course, in this sort of boom and bust, you know, sort of uh reality of things out there, so that that might not last. But it it's a good example to look at. McGrath also did it um not long after we did, and they've had a couple. Um I think, I think the idea of them is is good to explore in R one. I think when done well, they can be relatively innocuous and not cause issues for neighborhoods. But when done poorly, they can represent a departure from the, you know, established form and use of a neighborhood that neighbors won't be prepared to accept. So it's often in the standards, and not just setback standards, but design standards, placement of windows, building height, um even building materials, of course, looking at the parking, you know, the number of bedrooms, those kind of things. We have some of those standards right now in R three. And they, we could certainly work off those, or it might be appropriate that we give a rework to, if we're considering them in R one, to the R three as well, to make sure they sort of line up. Um but I, but I for one think that detached detached suites are a good idea. For a little more context, secondary suites, basement suites, we've had in the land use bylaw forever. We still have them as as a discretionary use. A lot of communities in the region, you've seen them come over to permitted, so basement suites now going as just administrative permits, not going to MPC with a referral process. So I think it comes at a time where, you know, people are generally more accepting of this density change, you know, obviously it's a different time in terms of household sizes and stuff like that, so if you look at it that way, having four people on a parcel isn't much different than it was fifty years ago, it's just a different form. So if you, if you choose to pursue it, I'm happy to to draft a an amendment for your consideration. We can have some more discussion.
So so Ryan, i- if we're looking at that and council, if you think back, we had one a couple of weeks ago, where she was asking for that. But if you think earlier than that, there was one where down in what some people call Scalville, they had bought one lot
And they wanted to
consolidate. The only reason they, you know, it's the same issue then. So we've had two just in the last four months, let's say. So I guess some of the issues we'd look at would be, make sure there was adequate parking and access to it, you know, was it better to have it on corners or, you know, what does that look like in the Cardston? And I think even with R one, we have some awfully big lots, you know, you could, you could put an apartment complex and not notice it in the back kind of thing.
Yeah.
So just your thoughts on access and parking and things like that?
Yeah, I think in the Cardston context, it's 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 just good, the size alone. I mean, that that provides a buffer to the nuisance and stuff like that, that typically become an issue for these types of thing. It's all, servicing is an important one too. Most places say that they're not gonna provide separate services, separate shut-offs. Services have to be through the um the the principal servicing and s- you know, without independent billing and shut-offs and stuff like that. But I've seen other places do it with, make it a discretionary matter. Most places say you won't, they won't allow them to be subdivided, so they have to remain subordinate. That relationship has to kind of stay in place. The parking thing, I think with the garage suites are nice because right away you get installed, right? But we all know that people don't always use their garage parking, so I I think then then it comes down to, and it's the number of bedrooms, you know, and going back to the Crowsness Pass again, trying to, th- they get people that are there just to work during the week, right? And of course, everyone's gonna have a car if you got two and three-bedroom suites, so how do you manage that parking requirement? It's important to look at for sure.
Okay. Uh Councilor Grant, you're
Might have answered it. I wanted to ask about servicing, water and sewer servicing. Do you, do you see a scenario or what's your view on, you're gonna allow the second, secondary dwelling unit? Could or should it be serviced separately? Or could it be?
I mean, I think it's it's on a corner lot scenario is different, obviously. It's much, much easier. But in a conventional mid-block situation, then it's gonna be more challenging. Um and I think more from sort of a land use management perspective, um requiring the services to be common um enforces that relationship between landlord and tenant or, you know, it's it's a parents and a child or whatever that is, right? And I think it it keeps that relationship or it helps facilitate that the lines of communication open there. It's the same sort of thing we talked about with home occupations, right, that requiring it to be subordinate and because if if not, if you make it fully independent, then these things start to feel a little more like a full residential development within another one.
So you 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 would be against that, is that what you're saying?
I think the convention is to, is not to have separate services, and that's why.
And what are they doing in Crowsness Pass?
Uh they're not providing independent services.
Councilor Burton, Councilor Brown.
In Crowsness Pass, are are they using those, the two that we've had here would both be initially for family members. Are the ones in the pass, are they Airbnb in them or what what's their use? Like, is there any kind of a commercial aspect to some of those?
Well, they, as as you may know, they regulate tourist homes, Airbnbs really tightly there. They have a required buffer.
Okay.
Um it's at a hundred fifty meters. So once, once one's in there, you can't do another within that buffer. And that, that's what they said.
So primarily, these are not commercial, they're for the kind of uses that we've come across.
Because when that, when they first established that framework for short-term rentals, Airbnbs, there was a mad rush for people to get in, and most of those communities now are full in circles, pick up the whole thing. So, yeah.
Thank you, Brown. So two questions. You're speaking of that buffer. So my question was, for these, is it no different than we can only have so many multifamily dwellings within a certain area? Would that be under the same umbrella as that?
Um, no, I I I'm not sure exactly what you mean, I guess.
Um so like when we have, when we, someone builds a home in Cardston and they decide to put a basement suite in, they have to go to MPC and confirm that we don't have twelve others within the same area.
Oh, I, yeah, okay. So so through a discretionary use process, yeah, you're looking at those land use considerations. So if there's one right beside, and the development authority, MPC, decided that that was, well, this is a little too intense, then they could, if they saw fit, use that as a refusal reason.
Okay. And then the second question is, um it sounds like with all these other municipalities jumping in with this, that we should have, um it sounds like it's all about how it's written. So we should be able to learn from all these other communities, the do's and the don'ts, right? Like, they've already done it. So let's make sure that if we, council does approve this, that it's written very tightly so that we can, where the windows are, all the things that you were talking about, that we can make sure that it's appropriate and it's not a nightmare for the neighbor.
Councilor Burton.
Councilor, that's, that's why I wanted him to come talk about this, because as a member of the MPC, we would like some guidance. And the guidance, by way of bylaw, has to come through this body, so.
Okay, thank you.
So I agree with that.
Okay. Are we good with the detached suite? Let's carry on. Uh Norman? So Ryan, what would you say to that issue?
Yeah, I mean, I think there's gonna be cases where you run out of gravity, there's gonna be servicing challenges, so maybe you wanna say with the application, there has to be some sort of servicing analysis, um something like that.
Okay, thank you.
And Ryan, I think some of it would answer itself, so, you know, if if we said, well, it's not gonna work to hook up and so we're gonna have to take out five trees and a fence, and they may say, well, it's not worth it.
Yeah, we gotta redo the service, things like that. I think what what I've heard from a few people that have done this, the costs have been a lot more than they thought when they priced it out, all the considerations. It's a little different than just building a detached house. So, and that's partly maybe why we haven't seen it here yet.
Yeah. Good enough on that one. You want to uh talk about the planning for MR and ASP?
Yep, sure. Um so I guess starting with MR and then its relationship to an area structure plan. Municipal reserve can be done, we can, we get MR through two different ways. It's usually through the subdivision process, and you can take ten percent of the land, right? Ten percent or cash in lieu of that ten percent. But that cash in lieu rate is at the pre-subdivided rate of just the land. Um or you can dedicate MR by bylaw. Now, how um oftentimes, we don't see it at MPC because there are exemptions. MR is not applicable when the parcel being subdivided is less than two acres or for other things like a first parcel or a quarter section or egg purposes over forty acres, or if it's been previously taken, you can't take it twice. So when we, when we see it come in, we look at documents like municipal development plan or depending on the community, maybe there's a park needs assessment. Is there a need for a land dedication here? Usually, there isn't. So we're taking cash in lieu of land, and then the municipality has to account for that cash in lieu separate from general revenues, right? There has to be a separate accounting. Um so a- and how we get to that valuation, it's, we usually use the assessed value of the land. You can require an appraisal. In urban situations, you know, where land values are high, the MR cash in lieu can be very substantial. So that, that's how you get the MR. Now, it's important to note that the relationship between MR and school reserve, there's also MSR, municipal land school reserve. And it's, it's, it's become, it's come under the microscope in the last few years. And with that, in tandem with the new requirement for joint use and planning agreements with the school division, municipalities now have to do that. Um I know in my personal experience working with some school divisions, it's been hard to get them to talk about their school site planning, um how that works, you know. Uh uh I've said this before, I think, to town council, but in the town of Coldale example, it was like a crazy rush. The provincial government said, hey, we got money for school, and they said, oh crap, we don't have a school site. And then it was this uh not a great process, and people are very emotional about school sites. And a lot of people got upset there, and if you've driven through Coldale, now there's a new crossing on Highway Three, and there's a new subdivision going around the school. As soon as you say a school is coming here, land values go up, right? So that stuff is important. I think these new joint use planning agreements are a very good idea, they're necessary. So in there, you have to talk about um how you're gonna acquire school sites, all the fin- related financial stuff and the use of facilities and stuff like that. I think we're doing a few of them for a few of the school divisions. I hope I personally don't have to do any of them, but I think a lot of them are already done. Are you guys done? Yeah, no, yeah. So that's the the SR component, touching on that quickly. Now, in an area structure plan, if we're saying planning for MR and ASP, and that's Now, in an area structure plan, if we're saying planning for MR and ASP, and that's, that's a big, um. Talk about all kinds of things with area structure plans, but perhaps in relation to what we're hoping to do with the West Area Structure Plan, which we now are able to. Start with, usually in an area structure plan, you're gonna see, there's gonna be a land use concept. It's not gonna just talk about lots, residential in the West ASP context, but also maybe there's open space, park space. You might even be so bold as to use the word potential school site, but you you can gotta be careful with that, right? And now with the the Jupa things, we have, we'll have the benefit of those. And I guess we'll have the benefit of one going into the rerun of the West ASP.
Right, and there are a few things that we've talked about that aren't just schools, for example, seniors homes. Daycare, what else have we talked about? Anyway, some of those things that aren't sort of hard and fast in a Jupa. But there's still things that when we look at our community, we say, okay. You know, we we may want to look forward, not just in the West ASP, but you know, some of the other ones. Say, well, where would we put another senior home? Uh, cause it's hard to tear those down and then build them because where's everybody go in the meantime, right? You kind of have to build that that one before you disable this one. So those kinds of of things that we would look at and then, you know, that we look at water and roads and. Parking and, you know, bus routes and all those kinds of things. As we've talked about it, we thought, well, that'd be a good thing if we sat down with you and administration and things. And just kind of said, okay, you know, in the next X number of years. Do we have lots that would accommodate that? Are they on major transport routes? Do we have services, all those kinds of things? When we're looking at at the West ASP for the, cause we've talked about that one, it probably isn't adequate anymore. And now we have a whole bunch of teeny lots, but people are wanting bigger lots there, that's part of the issue, like along the golf course. But, you know, we would want to look at some of those other things, like characterizing this, right? That we've talked about that and one of the things that we'd want to look at.
Makes sense.
So anyway, we thought while we were looking at it, we we should expand it to look at some of those things as well, and I don't know if there's anything else on our list, but. Anyway, you know, like if the three of us sat down and just kind of said, okay, yeah, hospital.
All right, that's good. So that's to do, what, I'm looking at a time and at seven o'clock, we have our delegation that is here. So do we want to do, uh, before maybe the local improvement tax? If you want to talk generally about that in a video, we can view it later.
Yeah, we can do it later.
Sure, eh and that, I I really don't, I I've been involved or adjacent to a bunch of local improvement levies. But, um, usually it's the the planning happens first and then the local improvement aspect is sort of an implementation tool. So I haven't been too directly involved in these, but I have them, seen them used effectively and. And they're used for all kinds of of different things, you know, whether it's, uh. I've seen in the in the McGrath context, for example, when they do the mid-block subdivision, the local improvement, the people, the locals that are benefiting benefiting from this. The benefit is received from the locals, the neighborhood or whatever, uh, as opposed to the broader community. So they pay for it, pretty straightforward, um, concept with that. I think the examples we sent over were from Raymond and Pincher, so it's certainly a, it's it's nothing new, it's a very effective tool. Sometimes councils are reluctant, you know, there's a misunderstanding as to what it is. Um, but, uh, yeah, and and I I talked to someone else in our office quickly before I left today. And he was going to try to put together a Cartston template for a local improvement levy. And I wasn't sure exactly what he meant by that, but I'll be happy to to learn more myself and keep working on that with you. And maybe it's a tool that can be used in tandem with the area structure plan, we have seen that kind of thing done before, right? You see the improvements are contemplated in the plan, the plan is adopted by bylaws, now statutory plan. It's in the public consciousness that this is happening and it's out there that these folks are gonna pay for it. Right, it's usually about that messaging and the soft incremental steps of planning. As opposed to one day they get it in the mail that this is coming down your throat. So we do have a vehicle to do that with the, you know, various stages of planning documents.
Good, thank you. Now councillor Burton, how long is that video? Okay, well then, let's go for it. Thank you. Thanks, Ryan.
Yep, thank you.
Cool video, councillor.
Let's start it over, it's so short, it's hate to miss it. Okay, that's good.
Quite good.
So this was put together by ORSC for MD Willow Creek. But what they were doing, they were doing a major overhaul of their land use bylaw. And so they put this out there on social media and had tremendous viewership of it. And I think back to some of the things that we've done, for example, when we looked at alcohol issue or any of those where. Where people, when they get something in writing, you know, they don't really understand it, but you watch a little minute and a half video, okay, well, that makes sense. So I just thought it's a tool that those of you who may be on council going forward or administration can use. And so what they've said is, look, we did this, all we have to change are three things. And you could use it for your land use bylaw change or or whatever. And it's very cost-effective, like when I just was talking in the hallway kind of thing, they said, you know, for five hundred dollars. We could build one of these for you. So I think just anytime that we wanna communicate with the public on something that we're doing. That, yes, we can send them the brochure or whatever it is, but but something like that. If if you look across our demographic, we've got older people, younger people, you know, just the range of people. This is going to reach some people that the letter doesn't, right? And the result was for council, they they thought that it made it, uh, the whole process goes smoother. There was way less pushback, way less calling in, hey, what's going on? And if they did, they'd just say, hey, watch the video, if you have any questions, call us, they didn't get the questions. So anyway, just I think that's a useful tool going forward, cost-effective and we've got experts that will provide the narration. We just give them, hey, here's what we want and they do the visual and the narration. The narration's the critical part, it has to be accurate and they know what they're doing, so.
Thank you very much, yeah, indeed, it's a very cute video, very informative.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you so much for coming and I'm glad you could make it on time. All right, uh, councillors, we're going to prepare for. The next presentation. It's all good, we carry on. You need a minute to stretch? Yeah, if you need a minute to stretch. Okay, come on, no, like, Evans is there, ready to do his presentation. All right, happy to see you here and please inform us about those poisonous misery.
Well, first and foremost, I'd like to thank the council and and mayor for the opportunity to present. I know, say it is a hard job being what you guys do and this probably isn't first and foremost on lots of your minds. But it is to me, so I thought, uh, I'm very grateful again for the opportunity to present to you and talk about it. Um, as a lot of you know, I sent this and hopefully I think you guys got this in advance. So I'm not gonna go through each and every detail of the slide, a lot of that was for informational use only. It's good points to know, but I won't talk through all of it, so you can read through it and you can know of it. The first two pictures here, though, are exact pictures from surrounding my piece of land that I farm here in town. Um, it is on four, well, really on three sides of mine, three and a half sides of my land. Is is all actually town land and this is prevalent and growing pretty rapidly. But it's it's throughout all of Cartz and it's not just around my piece of land as well. With the invasive species, really, the one to highlight here is the harm that it does cause the environment and it is costly. Uh, maybe lots of you know what it already looks like, it's, sometimes it was used actually as an ornamental. Uh, plant before they really understood what it was and what the effect was to to the environment and to the humans that surround it. Um, again, it's, uh, it's very easy to to identify. If you ever have any doubt about it, if you go out and you break a little bit off, there'll be a milky substance inside. That gives it away really quickly of what it is compared to some of the things that I'm confused with. The one thing with this is is the thing to note is what it causes for humans. It is actually, it can be toxic to humans and it is toxic to livestock as well. It is a very much a happy invasive species, it loves to grow and it loves to spread. Biggest notes from this one, again, there's lots of really good information here. But it's interesting that it can produce up to a hundred and thirty thousand seeds in its pods. Now, when these pods are developed and they're ready to mature, that pod can spread up to fifteen meters. In a radius when it actually gives off. Uh, that is a massive amount of area just from one pod that can spread and these seeds can populate. It's not hard to see how and why it spreads so quickly. And why it becomes a very much controlling plant in our environment. The root system helps make it very hardy, it can go as deep as thirty feet. Uh, is what they've researched and found, but along those roots, it can sprout and bud on multiple points along that root. That root won't just grow up into one plant, there'll be several plants that can come up. And again, each one of those plants is a potential spot for, uh, spreading further seeds, growing. If you cut it, it can regenerate, like if you plow it, for example, it can regenerate multiple shoots off of that cut point. And it can keep growing with that, it will bud along its roots. So it is, uh, very hard to control once we've allowed it to establish. It reproduces by the seeds and the roots. Um, again, it is very adaptive to our environment that we're growing in here in Cartston. It is aleopathic, meaning that it will secrete a chemical that, and when it gets into the soil, it helps. It doesn't help, it prevents other plants from actually growing. So it can help establish itself and prevent itself from being overtaken by other species by that that chemical. A secretion into the soil. And then for us, what we have found in Alberta is the lack of natural predators for us. Um, it's not one that we have a lot of people or a lot of animals that will go out and eat it and will actually. Control its growth or control its spread. So the control, this has been talked about, in fact, this this presentation, I I should give credit to the Invasive Species, um, Society. That a lot of this was adapted from what they've presented. So it, um, they are working and and other municipalities and other associations are working in Alberta. And trying to figure out how do we control this the best way? We can control it, we do know that, it's just a matter of we have to control it to start doing something or the spread will become. Really, it will be, become a field of leafy spurge. So with this, I mean, they're looking at the chemical, the mechanical means, the grazing means, as well as the biological controls. There's all those things that can be implemented and can be utilized in the tool belt to control leafy spurge. One of the other interesting things about leafy spurge is it is listed in the Weed Control Act in Alberta, it is a noxious weed. And so with noxious, it means the person shall control the noxious weed. There is one other listing in the weed control that it's prohibitive noxious weed. Now, leafy spurge, granted, is not listed as a prohibitive noxious weed yet, I don't know if it'll ever get to that point. When it becomes prohibited, that's when you must destroy. Um, we're not to that level yet, now it is only listed as a noxious weed, which means that we shall control. And we're expected to control that under, under the Weed Act of Alberta. It's costly, it's costly directly to me, but if you look at what it is in effect to Alberta. You know, we're two point one billion dollars is the impact on Alberta. Now, a lot of that, it's coming from the threat to the biodiversity, ecological effects that we have. But it's overall, it really spreads from there. And that associated can go into the loss of range land, the loss of cropland, the loss of use of lots of those things. That with the, the environment that leafy spurge pro- or prohibits or that it creates. It just prevents that land then becoming useful for other reasons that it used to be useful for. So that's where the cost directly comes down to us. Um, I've personally spent thousands of dollars since I acquired the land there and controlling the weed in the land there. Um, it is frustrating for me when you spend that money, they have it all just flourishing right around me. That you've seen the spread, so even if it's on the edge of the the town land, it's not hard for those seeds to get right back into my piece. And I continue to spend thousands every year in controlling that with the chemical means that we have available to us. Um, but it is, it is frustrating, um, it is, it is hard to see that where a lot is spent. The plan for that piece of land would be to try to put it into a. A grass or a, um, well, an alfalfa or a hay mix, but with that. It's hard to market that crop if it's full of leafy spurge. And that's where it takes the hit for me personally, is it's hard to move that when people know, is it, does it have leafy spurge? Is it viable? So our best means is trying to control that to be able to maintain that we can get a crop off there, that we can market that crop. And maintain that we can use that as production land. So really what this comes to, why I've approached council today and why I'm seeking an audience is. From the outside, again, this first note, I will put the clause in here that because I do not work for the town. Um, maybe there is a proactive plan in place, I just don't see it, cause I'm not a part of the town employees. But from the outside looking in, so I will put a caveat that I don't know, but from the outside looking in, it it seems that the town does or lacks. A proactive plan on how we control this weed or what are we doing to actively go after it? To make it less abundant in our community. Um, unfortunately, this isn't the first time that the council or the town has been presented to this. Uh, there was a wonderful presentation made back, I think in twenty eighteen on the back same topic. I don't know what has been done since that time. So it is something that's coming up again and I'm hoping that with the continual. I don't wanna be a thorn in the side, but a continual, um, bringing it to the attention of of council and to the town. That hopefully we can work together to come up with a plan on how we can approach this problem. And how we can actually see some results from this and actually go after this with, um, a few options that are available. Now, those options, um, I, why, I actually ran into mayor, I think a year ago, she was out on a walk. And I, I, uh, tried to, uh, pulled her aside and said, hey. I ambushed her more or less and well, I stopped, but I said, hey, we gotta do something. And she said, come, come to council, but come with some ideas, don't just come with a complaint. So, you know, we've sat through this and we've looked through, what are our options that I could possibly suggest? you know, we've sat through this and we've looked through, what are our options that I could possibly suggest? And again, these are just suggestions, but they're options that you can look at. Carson County actually has a great weed program. They are very active in the county and trying to control any of the prohibitive noxious weeds as well as noxious weeds to prevent that spread. And a lot of means, Cartston County is in the forefront as the weeds come from the southwest direction and they spread into Alberta, they are helping the rest of Canada and the rest of Alberta by trying to prevent that spread here in, in Cartston County. So they have a very good weed program. One of the options is the town could partner with the county and take what they have learned. They have great, um, expertise on staff. They've been doing this a long time. These, these, uh, employees or these individuals or team members for the county are knowing what they're doing and they can be a great asset to the town if, if the town would, um, I think, reach out and work something out. The other would be to develop an internal spray team that would go around and control this, much like what the county does with their weed program. The, there's always the talk in, in government, you have the, the carrot and the stick and I, I don't like the stick approach. Um, but the third comment is more about along the lines of educating and incentivizing our residents. You know, what can we incentivize them? And incentivize can be in brackets to say, is this the carrot, is this the stick on how do we help them become part of the solution, not part of the problem? How do we help them to understand what would happen if we don't control this weed? You could also reimburse the landowners. I mean, I'm happy to, to spray around the, my perimeter on the town land. Either we would more or less just hire the county to come in and help do that and then we'd have to reimburse the county, but I'm happy to do that if the town wants to reimburse landowners for the, the taking care of the the town land that's adjacent to their properties, that works, you know, that works fine with me. It's just another option. Again, this isn't an exhaustive list. I mean, you guys could buy the land from me and tell me to go away and your problem goes away too. I mean, there's, there's lots of ways to look at this, but my, my intention for this is just to bring this to your attention and see what we can do to proactively come up with solutions to how do we address this issue? I, it might not be forefront on, on everyone's mind in the town. Um, I am a little bit as Jeff, um, as Jeff put it, that I'm a little bit of the square peg in the round hole here in the town, but I'm still part of the town, I guess, so figure out if we can work this together and make this happen, but with that, any questions?
I totally appreciate what you, uh, trying to tell us. I've been here about eighteen years almost and it's only in the past three years that I started to have leafy spurge in my yard. And so it's obviously moving.
Yeah, I was gonna mention that. I don't have it in my yard. It's across the road on the fence line between our neighbors, uh, north of us. Last year, my son just went in there and hacked it down. And what's a better solution? Could you buy stuff at home hardware and spray it or? This is just along that one area along Darren's fence line there. I don't think it's even spread into Darren's field that much. I haven't looked at it that close. What is the solution for a local homeowner?
There's definitely chemicals that will work and not kill grass, like they use it in pasture land pretty heavily. They are expensive. I'm not going to sugarcoat it. They're expensive chemicals, but they are effective. There are options that are available to them though, that can help reduce that. With a root that's established as deep as it can be, you really are, it's not a one and done. Like you really have to keep coming at this and you're wearing down the root. You're trying to break down that root strength until it eventually can, you know, win that battle, but it's, it's a long process and it only gets worse if we do nothing.
Councilor Jensen, Councilor Grantson.
Uh, being a farm girl and I know that that's a cursed weed and my father and my husband both spend hours spraying our farmland. And, um, I know that it can eventually take over your gardens, your flowerbeds, your lawn. It's horrible. And I talked to Jeff about a year, a year ago about it, um, because I had some concerns over it. And, uh, he just said that they don't have a program yet in town for spraying, um, leafy spurge, I believe. Um, but I, I really encourage us to, you know, partner with county or do something because it's a, it's a weed that, that you just cannot get rid of and you know, it's not an easy fix. Spray it once and it's done. It's like you said, it's over and over and over again. It's, it's horrible.
I, I thank you for taking the time to come and give us a, a little more information on this. Some of this was, was new to me. I live around the corner from the mayor on East Hill. I'm immediately adjacent to, uh, the greenbelt space of, of the hill itself. I've lived there for almost eight years now. And I'm blown away at how fast the leafy spurge has taken over that piece of greenbelt next to me.
Yeah.
And, um, I think it behooves us to, at the very least, direct administration to investigate a potential program, uh, solutions as you've identified here and put a cost to it to see if this is something that we could seriously look at.
Uh, yeah, um, the county, obviously this leafy spurge comes from somewhere. It's usually not from in the town. It comes from out because everybody's mowing their lawns here. If there's a place like west of the town where there's leaf, does the county get after them if their field is full of leafy spurge?
Yeah, the county is, is pretty good with working with landowners and educating them. I would say there's not a lot of landowners in the county itself that aren't familiar with it. But I don't know if they've issued weed notices.
I don't know if they're out there. I'm just wondering where it's coming from. It's usually probably come from the west, so.
A lot of it's coming down the riverbanks, but now that it's in through the town, it's, it's kind of self-spreading now. If we do nothing inside the town, it just spreads within itself and we don't have to say, you know, it's coming from outside. It's, it's in, like, it's no longer, we're keeping it out. It's, we have to now control it within.
I'm trying to understand the difficulty when it is on the bank of a waterway like a creek. You cannot even spray on the edge of the water. So how do you literally take care of a plant that you cannot spray because environmentally you cannot spray?
And I, I, I will admit, I am not an expert on what Alberta environment allows and does not allow when it comes to the spray. I know the county will know those and I don't know if, I mean, yeah, the administration and the county will know what is allowed. I know and for me, like I've had it around my trees and stuff and I'm obviously very sensitive about the trees and so I won't do a broadcast spray around the trees. I'll go out with actually a backpack where I can very, very specifically direct that spray onto the plant and not worry about it spreading with a drift. So there's ways to control insensitive areas. Again, I don't know what the rules are, but say the administration knows what they're up against on that. I would say there's, there's always a way to creatively look at it and figure out how do we do this and still meet the regulations.
Thank you for coming. I, I was alarmed last spring at the amount we had and I know we talked about it. I brought it to council. One of the things we were going to talk to Steve Bevins and Jeff, he probably did, but you know, or Steve, I, did I say Jeff? I meant Steve, yeah. Because Steve, you know, Steve works very well with landowners. He's, he knows the ins and outs and, and the, the county also runs, Steve, you correct me on any of this, but you know, like when you get their tax notice, I've, I've received, uh, like a leaflet on leafy spurge and what to do about it and so they run a good education program. He's more than willing to come and work, but I think if, if we just sat down in the same room and like, like you said, you know, put, okay, here's a plan because it has spread now onto private land as well. So there has to be some kind of education and some incentive to deal with it because if your upwind neighbor isn't dealing with it,
You're gonna get it.
You're gonna get it.
Yeah, and that's a good comment. Uh, I don't mean to direct all my comments toward townland. It, it isn't just townland. Like I have neighbors that have empty lawns that are right, right full of leafy spurge and it just, it's a lot of leafy spurge and that's it.
But I think if we just agree, yes, we're aware of the problem. It is a problem. And, and if we have Jeff and Steve sit down and come up with some kind of a plan. Because it's getting worse. Like it's the last two years, it's just exploded.
Yeah, I never seen it. Like I said, my yard and my son, it's my yard.
And it's, it's frustrating when it comes in because you see it and you're like, I've lost the battle. You know, you can do all the work and you're like, now what?
But it's, it's not just your round peg in the square hole. I mean, we, there's a broader issue here that.
Yeah. No, I, I.
No, but it is. We're, we're not, we're not typically about agricultural land in town.
Yeah. Though Jeff's been, he's a fantastic and he's always very helpful. I, I must compliment him on, on the work he does.
Councilor Jensen.
You know, the, the problem too though is that a homeowner doesn't really have access to the real good chemical like what a farmer has in order to spray the leafy spurge.
But you can mow the heck out of it. Like they have things they can do without bringing in a commercial sprayer on their little lawn, right?
I think that's where I'm just a huge fan of when somebody, I mean, I always looked at it this way. When someone told me there's no way, there's no way to get it done, my first response back is you haven't looked creatively enough.
Yeah, right.
And I think there's just ways to creatively figure out, okay, well, here's the regulation. How do we get around, not get around that, but how do we suffice and satisfy the regulation as well as be able to do what we need to do? I, I think there is creative solutions to that. It's just a matter of digging into it and spending the time and the resources to do that.
Councilor Brown.
So I think, um, a big importance, the importance on the town side of it for our taxpayers is education. Because, I mean, I grew up on a cattle ranch. I'm aware. But the majority of people in Curdston, it's in their garden, it's in their back. They don't know. They don't, they don't, they don't have par three that they can nuke it with. They don't have or whatever we have or don't have. Um, I just feel like it's education. It's, you know, when you get your land tax, you know, it's in there. We have other, all the other information in there, but there's nothing wrong with saying, hey, see this picture, this is something.
That's what the county does.
Yeah, like work with us and why reinvent the wheel? If the county's doing a fantastic program, let's look into it, see what our costs are, see how we can be better neighbors.
And I, if I may, Mayor, I, I think we have to set an example too. So if we were to say, hey, you guys deal with your weeds and we're not showing up dealing with the weeds, I think we have to lead by example.
Exactly right.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. We need awareness. It's definitely important to understand how invasive that species is and how damaging it is to the farmers and to environment. Thank you.
Well, thank you for your time. I appreciate it, Council and Mayor.
Thank you. And I appreciate you coming to council. Thank you. Bye. Alright, councillors, we're going to go to seven committees and reports.
So Mayor, I have a item under seven A.
Okay.
So do I.
Go ahead.
So at the MPC, you're aware that we, uh, had the town as an applicant under the guise of the golf course, um, for an alcohol license.
I hope you didn't approve it. Anyways, go ahead.
Well, it was a bit of a mixed message, truthfully. Because the question is, you know, are we doing this temporarily for the building that's there now or the one? Anyway, what we did just to report is we did approve it and we're just going to leave it to administration and the leaders at the golf course to figure out. Yeah, and I'm gonna, I, I'm gonna let, I'm gonna deal with one of those in particular, but so anyway, there are conditions specific to that building. So two things I want to talk about. One is we had a presumption and correct me if I'm wrong that the new building, because here's our problem. If we grant the license, what happens when we get the new building?
Right.
We didn't even know the answer to that. So we approved it and there are two understandings that I just want to convey. One understanding was that when we get the new building, that it will be designed in such a way to be compliant so that we didn't approve something that becomes offside. Now, there's no point in us digging in and doing a septet on the new building because it's not even there yet. But on the other hand, we, we hope that that will be, and we're sure it is, one of the considerations when we're designing and building that building, acknowledging that it now has approval for a license and that we don't have to reinvent anything after we've built it. It'll be built to work the first time. So that's the first understanding is that everybody's good with that?
Essentially it's for safety, storage, et cetera.
Yeah, so you know, like if, if you think back to, um, what's now called High Five. So we looked at the ability to break in. We looked at lighting. We looked at hours, those types of things and that'd be the same there. So uh, there, we did some of the conditions that we put on. I just want you to know this is the, the hours. So there are residences near there. So I think we put a nine o'clock or something. If I remember. Anyway, whatever it is. So that was one of the considerations. The other one is when, if you got the same phone calls I did when we were dealing with the alcohol issue, one of the pushes or selling points of approving alcohol at the golf course was that we would have less risk of alcohol abuse. So there could be drunk driving after the fact. So I had one of the doctors in town with a lengthy conversation and he assured me that by having it offered, we could control it better there. So as we talked about it at the MPC, we realized we couldn't put control conditions. Those were really what I'll call administrative issues. So for example, enforcing the rule that you can't bring your own alcohol. So the most we could come up with was that there be a sign or signage put up saying you can no longer BYOB.
Which is normal.
Which is normal. But we, we just wanted to convey beyond the signs that we really hope that the administration of it is that we don't allow alcohol there other than what we sell. So that it's no longer a free for all. Because what I am told and was told is that it wasn't free for all.
It was.
And that that was worse than controlled. And so I think that's one of the things that this council took into consideration when we approved that and changed the bylaw. So it, Jeff, if you could pass on to our managers there that the MPC and I hope council really does want it controlled there. And, and that I, I'd be really disappointed if, if we found out that it wasn't being controlled. So we've made it available and I think especially when we get our new building and you know, the, how they have you come around on the carts and stuff like that, we approved that kind of license as well. It's not just in the building. Anyway, I won't repeat it again, but that's that, that doesn't necessarily show up in their approval. But it's desired that that be the case. I, I hope you would back me on that. That, that we feel that that's what we wanted at council.
Yeah. Alright, thank you so much for that. Councilor Brown, I know you want to report on the power.
Uh, uh, two things. So, um, as well as put it into the paper, not that I'm throwing that out there. So July seventeenth, uh, Moses Lake, Town of Curdston and the Blood Tribe are having a, a competition powwow. So it will be July seventeenth. There will be grand entries at one PM and six PM. We are having the dance categories. We're having, um, in, uh, a drum group competition. Uh, food and craft vendors are welcome, a princess pageant. Um, all the information, uh, Shem has been working really hard with me to come up with, he's come up with a beautiful poster that will be coming out in the next couple of days with all the information on it. We'll make sure we send it to people. Um, and it's going to be an incredible event. So, um, I'm letting you know, but I'm also as council, it's on a Thursday. I would appreciate the support of council to come and spend the day helping because it takes a village and it's going to take a lot of us. And, uh, Blood Tribe and Moses Lake, uh, especially is working really hard with us to make sure that this is a great event. And so I'd appreciate, um, the support of council to just say, hey, what can I do that day? Here.
Football field.
Sorry, Lions Park. Yeah, where it is every time.
What time are you starting?
So I said it's one and six.
One and six?
Yep. Yeah.
Okay, so when we did those powers, the areas where we needed help was not the tabulation because I like to have their own tabulator.
We've got that taken care of.
But it was the parking. But it was the parking.
That's taken care of.
So they needed also for the one people come and registers themselves.
That's taken care of.
For the dance. So if all that is taken care of, you needed help with people um helping with the traffic. Moving the people towards a parking lot in that area.
Art.
Yeah, uh uh so we had a little tent at the front where we collected the money. And so that was somebody from the town doing that. And helping the people knowing where to park. You needed people to direct traffic as to where where those vendor could set up.
That's all taken care of.
Okay, then you needed people, uh we had the uh youth coming and help us set up the tents.
We've got that.
But then where is the need for support?
So the need for support is in the actual one and six P M of needing to take water bottles to some of the dancers or it's it's whatever we need you. I just want you there that day. So that if there is a need to fill it, well, and for the grand entry.
Yeah.
I would appreciate having.
Grand entry is important that we have as many as possible.
Agreed. So it's it's I'm, we already have the big things taken care of. That's all done.
So you want a presence.
I want council's presence there. And I want you to go get if we need to go get. Because I'm gonna be going and getting, yeah. Yeah, if I, if we need a whatever, I need, I need help to go do a whatever.
Okay, so. So I want to uh know, for example, do you have the youth that come set up the tents and everything?
So we've got the Town of Curdston and Curdston County and Blood Tribe coming that morning to set everything up.
Okay, so in when we did, when we did those, when we did those uh powers, we had those students from B T I
Yeah.
come and we had volunteer shirts, they were yellow shirts with volunteer. And they were the one who were kinda distributing the water and all that stuff and taking care of all those things. But we fed them.
So the difference is.
Remember, we had made sandwiches and lunch and supper for them.
This year, Mayor, is that it's during the Blood Tribe's week of events.
So they're not available?
Agreed.
Okay, I get you.
And.
Okay, so that explains.
We literally, I mean, the chief has requested it beyond this day, which is why we've had it this day. Because we're trying to get the traffic between the two powwows, the Browning one and the
No, I I get you.
So our foot traffic is fabulous, but by doing that, it eliminates us using some of
The B T I.
That have been used before. So I I don't have those pockets of people, but I do have, um I'm not gonna list all the names, but we have, yes, I need you there. Secondly, um on July nineteenth at eight A M, um the M O U uh committees, so all of us, Fort McLeod, Pincher Creek, Pincher Creek M D, Town of Curdston, Curdston County, uh we will be doing our yearly powwow, nope, M O U breakfast um in standoff, July nineteenth. Um we're going to be there at eight A M setting up. Nine o'clock, we were feeding uh people. Uh last year, we fed eight hundred and we were hopping. So again, I would appreciate um to have, I don't need every counselor there, but I would sure appreciate some help because it's a lot on my shoulders and I I would appreciate some help in those two areas. So if you can, I don't need answers right now, but we don't have another council meeting for a little bit, so I wanted to make sure to put all that out.
That's the nineteenth where?
Saturday in standoff. So it's kind of night days.
So Counselor, did, have you made contact with Eric Lemieux and the Egg Society crew?
I have.
Okay, good.
Yeah, through Sean, but yes.
Because our next our next meeting would be the second Thursday of July.
So when is the, is Jul- when is our next council meeting in July?
Yeah, July.
July the eighth?
Yeah.
Okay, so there are meetings before, so that's.
Yeah, yeah. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Now, the library report is not inside there and I I have asked Jeff to make sure that those reports are sent to the town office uh for publication. Counselor, Kenley, Counselor Jensen.
I just wanted to respond to Counselor Burton. Is that allowed or no?
Sure.
About the golf thing.
Yeah.
I was just, the reason I said I hope you didn't approve it is because I didn't want any money spent on that building. So I don't know. That was, that was what I was saying, because I didn't, I figured or I assumed there was gonna be some massive amount of money to make it click. So I don't know what that's at, and that's why I just said what I said.
From our point of view, once we get the application,
Okay.
the money spent on the other end kind of isn't our business, do you know what I mean?
Well, I just thought, I always thought there was to make it a septed like worthy and needed this, this and this.
There is.
Okay.
But that's what I'm saying is, oh, once we get an application, we have to deal with it, because if we if we don't within twenty-one days or whatever it is, it's it's deemed a denial, so we have to deal with it. So we we raised that issue, but it's not really our decision. So we approved it, but you know, whether we wanna spend money in that building to make it compliant or whatever.
Uh so.
That wasn't rea- that's not really MPC's business. We're just saying, if you do it, here's what it has to look like.
Oh, okay, I got you.
Right? So we don't.
So, okay, and then.
And we inspect, but but.
Got you, okay. So it's not approved or like, it's, you just approved the application, you're not saying, yeah, you can go do it. But conditions have to be met, right?
Yeah, so we we've given a conditional.
We can talk about it after, that's fine, but.
Well, it's important for the whole council because we're gonna get questions, right? So we gave a conditional approval. But the applicant being the town, I'm wearing several hats here, but so the applicant then has a choice of going ahead with it, not going ahead with it, waiting, whatever.
So they can wait.
Yeah, I mean, we've approved it.
Okay, then my second.
That's when the second building issue came up, well, which building are we approving it for? So we really had to approve it for what's there now. And that was the assumption that I raised that I sure as goodness hope that the second building complies.
Right. So my second question was, what you say, is it gonna bind our future people that are working the kitchen to those hours of operation for alcohol? Meaning, what if they want the restaurant open till eleven? Or ten, like, is that gonna bind them? Or can it be revisited when they're in there? Is it gonna bind them to say you have to stop alcohol sales at nine? That was, that was.
Yeah, I think so, but I, you could probably revisit it. And and like we did on the other one, I think we made this one a temporary one twos, right? So what we're doing on the first several is, like, we're all new to this. We're doing temporary ones and that way we can go back and say, okay, is this working and and is it not working? So if it wasn't working, because look, everybody wants it till eleven, we could change it to eleven. The other hand, if we had, say, a high five, for example, we made that one have a cutoff because there's neighbors right there. The neighbors might say, you know, this is just way too noisy. We need it cut off at eight or whatever, right?
Okay, cool.
Okay, Counselor Jensen, Counselor Coop.
Um, just going along with the library, and I know that the library minutes are hard because she doesn't give you, I don't know how it is now, but they they don't give you um um an online copy. And I always, so I always had to ask Donna to send a copy because I doodled all my notes. But anyway, uh along with that, we struck a committee to look at their operations. What has happened with that?
Okay, Counselor Jensen, we had a preliminary meeting with Jeff, Counselor Kenley, myself, um Mary Lou, um De- Deb- Deborah, Debbie.
Blaine Deborah.
Deb Caroon and Blaine Hogg. And the idea was to try to have a think tank at that point and come up with ideas for what would a consultant be tasked with? And so we brainstormed. And then unfortunately, we were supposed to have a follow-up meeting, but we did not have quorum to be able to do it. So it did not happen. So yesterday, we had a library meeting where we um brought more structure to what could happen. And this will be revised in a fall when they meet again. So nothing is going to happen really before the fall.
So you're looking at finances and everything else and along with the operation?
It, everything will be looked, there is many different categories that will be looked at. Once I have more or less this structure of possibly the the meets that would go into an application, a grant application, then it will come to council for you to see. Okay, so that's what I can check.
That'll happen before October twentieth?
I think they're meeting again in uh, yeah, that would, I would say so, yeah.
I think that'd be good if it did.
Yeah. It has not been easy. They have uh members that have resigned from the library uh board and uh to get a new one. I mean, you know, yesterday, we could not go in closed session again. We didn't have a quorum again. So it makes it difficult to to discuss some matters that need to be discussed sometime in closed session, so.
I'll check your pen, mind just blow a phone me, but you know. Um, two things.
You mean to tell me it's a leaky pen?
I guess so, it came from somewhere. Um hours of operation, I just, just to throw it out there. I bought supper at the McGrath Golf Course last night and ordered it out. Eight o'clock, they shut down because everything started to wind down. Um since the gates open, uh the building, anything? Are we starting on anything? Are we putting any services, anything going on? Okay.
All right, anything else? You have a budget to, a budget to actual, you have a C E O report. You have a C P O report. Um, anything else?
Mayor, just a quick little in the questions if we're there.
Go ahead.
Um, it's really simple. The radar of one rate by the McMurray Dental Office, it never, it's like the like, the speed, speed center, it's been like crap for like last year and a half or two that I've noticed. Is there any way to fix it or is it like, it's just like the lights don't work? I'm sorry, not working. Yeah, yeah. I don't know if it's an easy fix or if it's, I don't know. It would be nice if it worked. There's like that speed sensor rate.
Oh, okay.
It lights up, but it's like you see half the numbers.
Oh, okay.
Just something simple.
All right. So if nothing else, we're going to go in a closed session. We have a few items. Uh local improvement matter, intermunicipal matter, controversial projects.
Mayor, I had a question on the uh, the um municipal enforcement report.
Oh, okay.
Did we skip that or?
No, I talked about it.
Oh, sorry. Can I ask my question?
Please.
Okay, so the dumping of the nine dogs, that is startling to me. Um do we know where these dogs came from?
Yes.
I guess, um, I mean, that's, that's pretty much a significant burden on our staff and wh- where, 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 where does the responsibility back to the owners, the liability, the responsibility for something like that? Or am I just pipe dreaming here?
Yeah, the S P C A was was involved. The owner denies responsibility. The ending, no one saw it and dropped it off in municipality. Oh, we can't pursue it anymore. How's the dogs? Probably you're able to move them anywhere.
Well, I guess, I I I think it's a, it's a crying shame that people can get away with this kind of thing.
No, please sir.
All right, counselors.
I'll make the motion to go into closed session.
Thank you all in favor. Thank you. Mary, thank you very much for being here tonight. Yeah, let's.